Hello folks. My name is Pete Friedman. I'm the founder and publisher of Centraltrack.com. If you are tuning in now for protest coverage, I know it ended kind of abruptly. It's been a wild day here in Dallas, Texas with President Donald Trump here in town, at Gateway Church, and then later at a private dinner fundraiser. If you were interested in checking out more protest coverage, and I encourage you to check that out because it's important to watch what people are saying on the ground. I highly recommend that you check out our Facebook, Twitter, Twitch, and YouTube channels where we've continued Davey J's live protest coverage. So if you're interested in checking that out, go to those channels. Just search Central Track on any of those channels and you'll find live content from Davey J, live on the scene at the protests in North Dallas of Donald Trump and police brutality at once. We are interrupting protest coverage to continue our Instagram Live interview series right now. I will be joined here shortly by District 7 Councilman Adam Basildua. And we're going to talk a little bit about how the city is responding to these protests. So it looks like Adam is in the chat right now. I'm going to accept his request. And then we're going to go right into it. Hey, Councilman.
Hi Pete, how are you?
I'm okay. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Let's peel back the curtain a little bit. Well, first of all, let me remind people that if you're tuning in for protest coverage, which we have been doing to date throughout the day on Instagram Live, you can currently find that on our Facebook, Twitch, Twitter, and YouTube channels. But we have interrupted that coverage right now to do a little bit of a civic discussion with one of our 14 city council members here in Dallas to talk about really everything that's been going on. So thank you for joining us, Councilman Adam Basildua.
Thank you for having us, or having me.
Yeah, to peel back the curtain a little bit, we set up this interview two nights ago at like 3:00 in the morning.
Yeah, we did. You're right.
I was up reading some social media and checking out things. And I saw that you were tweeting in response to someone. I was just like, hey, I know it's late. But what are you doing on Thursday? Have you been sleeping well? Why were you up so late, Councilman?
I have not been sleeping well. I would think that that's probably safe to say since about the beginning, the first week of March, to be honest with you.
From the start of the coronavirus stuff, yeah.
Yes, sir.
You are the representative of District 7. For those who don't know, can you describe what neighborhoods that encapsulates?
Sure, yeah. I represent District 7, which is the historic South Dallas Fair Park area. Southern Dallas going through down Bonton and to Jopie. Jopie is the southernmost point of District 7. And then some of southeast Dallas, essentially from Fair Park all the way to the Mesquite Line along 30 is District 7 with a little bit of a carve out. A little piece of Pleasant Grove and then what I call the pizza slice. And Ferguson and Oates north of 30, all the way up to Bishop Lynch High School. That is the northern.
Right on Ferguson Road there, yeah. Council members, I believe, are required to live in their districts, right?
Yes, sir.
So you live in that area? How long have you lived there? Yeah, go ahead.
No, I've lived here for about eight years. And I lived downtown for two before that. And then I was, well, I'm sorry, seven years here, two before that. And then I was in New York for close to six.
Okay, so you live in the kind of South Dallas area, which has frankly, and the two previous representatives have been black. They've been black council representatives and predominantly, I think, black neighborhood, right? How did you come to want to run and represent that? And what was your history for public office?
Wow, that, so.
That's a big question.
It is. So I'm actually the first non-black representative of South Dallas. Not just the previous two.
But not ever.
What's that?
Not ever.
For South, well, not ever, but since they've let people like us on the council.
Okay, sure.
But I, you know, I was a teacher for six years prior to running for office. I'm sorry, four years prior to running for office. I originally ran in 2017 because I was kind of inspired by a student of mine who was a junior at the time. And one day when we were talking about some things that were going on politically, he said, chef, why don't you run for office? And I said, well, I didn't really go the traditional route. You know, not many politicians went to culinary school.
Went to culinary school before you were a teacher?
Yes, so I went to teach from working in the restaurant industry.
Okay.
And I went into the restaurant industry for my passion of food. And that's actually why I moved to New York City as well. So I taught culinary arts with DISD at both Wilmer Hutchins High School and Skyline High School.
Oh, wow. I didn't realize that was what you taught.
What's that?
I didn't realize that was what you taught. So you specifically taught like cooking classes, I guess?
Uh huh. I taught vocational magnet, the magnet program so that the kids have a trade to go into. So when the student asked me why I wouldn't run, and I told him that, he said, well, neither did our president. And it was a real eye opening moment. He, you know, made me realize that we do have a reality star in the White House. So I came home, honestly started conversations with my wife. And I said, if there's ever going to be a time for me to jump into politics, and we know I'm passionate about it, it's now. So I did. At that time, there was what I call the Fair Park giveaway that was underway that I've seen Central Track cover good coverage on. So that whole debacle, that whole Walt Human, Mayor Rawlings situation with my predecessor, Councilwoman Young, is something that was just really, it busted my chaps. It made me really start to peel the onion a little bit and dig into more of the nitty gritty of the makeup of this city. And it was also eye opening. I didn't feel that there was adequate representation at all, not only as a constituent, but seeing that nothing is a secret that we need change. And nobody was willing to bring it. You know, if you look at the history of some of my predecessors, you would see that there was a very strong tie to the mayor. The mayor before Mayor Johnson was definitely not real in tune with Southern Dallas.
Mayor Rawlings?
No, he wasn't. I mean, he.
Yeah, well, you did have the Grow South program, right?
Well, he worked towards that.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is that like Mayor Johnson's the first one that going into office already has relationships established with the constituency, et cetera. So the reason I point that out is that if you look at the voting record of some of the predecessors in this seat, it says a lot when you see that every vote goes with a mayor that was very evidently more towards that business mindset, so.
I think you are 33 years old.
Yes.
Are you the youngest council member?
Yes, sir.
What is, I mean, so I think that's something that we're seeing right now. And we're obviously, a lot of this conversation is going to be about the civic unrest that we're seeing right now in town. We'll get to that. But you don't necessarily, you know, I think this isn't necessarily an indictment on Dallas, but just in general, all across the board, you don't see too many young people getting involved in politics. Why is it important for the youth to do so? And why did you choose to do so at a young age yourself?
I think that it's really important for many reasons for young people to run for office because, you know, politics is a really high-energy, high-contact sport, right?
Yeah, it is.
It requires, I think, a level of stamina and will to really work. So that perspective, the piece of having the different perspectives and the conversations to find a consensus is really something that inspires me about being in politics. And there's no question about it that I have a different perspective and outlook than just about any other of my colleagues.
Who is the next youngest council person?
That's a good question. They're all so old.
How dare you. What a big, what a, it's really big.
I think it's high, right?
No, I think like Madrono's in his probably early 40s, David Narvaias, and a lot of those guys.
Yeah. So I do know that there were two council members that were elected at 32, just as I was. And that was Angela Hunt and also John Loza. But I did still beat that record by four months, so.
Oh, you were the record-holding youngest council member?
Yes.
I did not realize that. Congratulations. That's pretty cool. You had to take that to your grave. I think, talked a little bit about like the high-contact sport. We've definitely seen that in the last two weeks in Dallas. We are currently on, today is Thursday, right? No, this is the 14th day.
Oh, wow.
Of protests, right? Today's the 11th. I'm just doing the math in my head. Started 30 days, has September, April, June, and so all the rest of it. So 29th, 30th, 31st, 11 more days. So yeah, 14 days of protests in Dallas, Texas. You have, I kind of made a point, I think, of going out to some of these events.
Hosting, actually.
Yeah, you've hosted some of them, including one, was it this past Sunday at T-Pal Brewing Company?
Yes, sir.
What inspired you to want to host that event? And why was it important that an elected official hosts an event?
Well, you know, I.
And then also, obviously, the route of the event had some significance too. So tell us about that event.
Okay, well, I wanted to have an event. I wanted to have an event because I didn't see it happening from our leadership. And one of the things that I noticed from the first protest that I attended last Saturday, not this past, with the 1-4, was that the, there was a lack of people present who actually have the power to make a difference.
Sure.
You know, to actually vote or bring forward something that could. So, you know, regardless of if it's something that you're gonna do or if it's really something that you're aligned with, I think that it's a part of our job as officials to throw ourselves in front of our constituents. And that should be at all age. I can tell you one thing, as an educator from high school, I taught mostly juniors and seniors. And, you know, one of the things I think that is really wrong with society is making that age group feel inadequate or less than. And so when you have a younger group that is energized and mobilized and engaged in the process, whether it be through protest or showing up to City Hall, I think that it's important for them to get a little bit of affirmation, a little bit of a feeling of appreciation, if you will. And so I wanted to show up. And so I started showing up. People really appreciated it. You could tell people felt like their voices were being heard. So I wanted to add some. Councilmember Wes was doing a seven days of action plan and working with several of us to come up with some ideas. And I was very adamant about wanting to do a march. And I wanted it to highlight one of three intersections that exist in the country where Martin Luther King and Malcolm X streets cross.
Which is shocking to me. It's shocking to me that there's only three other intersections. Do you know what the other two are?
I did, but I don't.
I don't know. I don't have my head either, but yeah.
I did look it up because I thought that that was interesting as well. I had heard that it was the first one that came about, and I still haven't been able to confirm that.
Okay.
But I heard that that was the first one to come about and that there were only two other exists. I did confirm that only two other existed. And you say it's shocking, and yeah, it is, but it isn't at the same time. Because I think that it was pretty indicative of, I guess, the percentage of our country who really understood what their messages were.
Sure, that's fair.
I think that's a sad thing.
I think, I understand what you're saying about why it's important to host some of these events because you want people to know that they're being heard, right? That's what you're saying, like, that's why it's important for elected officials to be there. But I would also argue maybe perhaps even the opposite, right? Maybe it's important for council, for, not council members, but elected officials to be there, but also to listen, right?
Oh, 100%.
How do you balance that presence of speaking out right now in this very trying, unprecedented time versus listening? Like, is that something you're thinking about?
Oh, absolutely. You know, I mean, that's what I meant by they want to be heard. You know, they can protest outside of City Hall all they want. I think it's a slap in the face for us to, you know, think that our job is confined within those walls. If we have people that are mobilized and hundreds of people standing outside in the plaza, I have a hard time not going out there and hearing what they have to say. It's important for us to listen.
What have you heard in the last 14 days? And how, if at all, has that changed your position on certain issues?
I mean, I've heard it all. I have, it's an interesting part of being an elected official. I have heard everything from, I've heard everything from I'm a racist because blue lives matter to, you know, fuck the police and let's abolish it altogether, right? And there's a lot that I've heard in between. There is, I think, a huge misconception when it comes to talking about what the true intent is of the council with reallocating funds from the police department. I think that the knee-jerk reaction and quite frankly, a lot of who puts the messaging out, it's really their intent to piss people off. And it's more of like, it's a punishment, it's an attack. And there's almost a perfect storm for it to be, you know, that more conservative crowd that is very angry at everything right now anyway, for some reason. If they know that you're on the left side of the spectrum, like, it's almost hard to even have a conversation sometimes. Just because they look at me and say, I'm just, I mean, it's hard. But when you see that, and then you see that there's protesters that are screaming at the police and that there really is a movement out there to defund and dismantle. And then you see that there's Minneapolis who did dismantle. You know, there's so many variables that play into people not having accurate information.
Well, I think it's clear that to chant "defund the police" is a catchy catchphrase. But I think most people who are even chanting that acknowledge that defunding is different than unfunding. And defunding is not necessarily all the way the same as dismantling. And I do know that you were one of, I guess, 11 council members or 10 council members to send a group letter to City Manager TC Broadnax, which I guess, to those who don't know, it kind of acknowledged the chants and the "defund the police" movement. And kind of specifically asked City Manager Broadnax to look into some of ways to reallocate resources, right? Because the city budget is being approved in September, right?
Yes.
But City Manager Broadnax has to propose some elements of that later this month, correct?
August.
Okay, but there was a June 17th date on that letter.
Oh, yes, yes. No, that's a part of our budget workshop series. We don't actually get a budget presented to us with proposed line items.
What is happening on June 17th and what are you hoping to see from the City Manager there?
Well, so he's going to give us some different options that are going to show what it would look like for us to take some of that pie. People have asked me, well, you know, there's big shortfalls.
To be clear, that's a $500 million pie that is currently.
Well, that's what I was about to lay out. I mean, this, you know, people ask that. And why, how are we going to take?
And what is the totality of the budget size in Dallas?
1.2 billion.
Okay.
So if we have 1.2 billion and 60% of that is to public safety, and, you know, it equates to about $520 million, $520 million specific to police. And, you know, I guess a good way that I heard it kind of, an analogy is, what corporation do you know of that puts, invests 60% of their operating budget into a department that has year after year returned low performing measures? And I don't say that about the officers. I say that is that their performance measures are crime rates. You know, unfortunately, because I'm not saying that it's all within their control. But the point that I'm making is that there is absolutely no correlation to more officers equaling less crime. And if that were the case, then that 500 extra officers that we had from Governor Abbott last summer, we continue to see our violent crimes rise.
A little bit of context for that is last summer, when Dallas was going through a record-setting murder spree, murder rates, Governor Abbott kind of abetted the local police force with an influx of, I think it was at least 500 state troopers, who, many of whom were tasked to kind of your district a little bit. They're kind of looking to, I guess, not quite stop and frisk, but they were.
Oh, it was stop and frisk.
Okay, so what is the solution then? I mean, here's your opportunity for a soundbite, Councilman. Are you in favor of defunding the police?
I'm in favor of reallocating, reallocating and restructuring where we prioritize our dollars specific to public safety. I think that we prioritized too much, too many of our eggs in one basket, and that is policing. One of the things that I'd like to point out is that, you know, we just heard about the pilot program that exists called the Rite Care, which is, the Rite Care, which is where we have mental health professionals that respond on a call with an officer to mental health calls. So one thing that we know is that since the Reagan administration cut federal funding for mental health, we have not only seen an increase in homelessness in the country, we've seen an increase in addiction, we have seen an increase in domestic violence, and we have seen an increase in violent crime. All of those can be correlated to mental health. Mental health is now falling on the hands of the county and the state. Our state is the lowest funded state in the entire United States for mental health resources. So this is all on the backs of the county and the municipality. So 1,500 calls within this pilot program. We only were able to send a medical professional to 13% of those calls, which means that not only were 87% of those calls responded to by people that were ill-equipped and under-trained to do it. The mentally ill did not receive any proper care, which is going to eventually be bad. But then last but not least, in fact, somewhat most important, especially if the reason you oppose this concept is because you are pro-police, is that that's 87% of those calls that officers could have been responding to priority one and priority two calls.
Sure. So it's a staffing issue in terms of like specific talent and specific like kind of expertise, right? Is what you're talking?
Instead of, there's this magic number of officers to make our police force, you know, right? I don't necessarily think that the bodies have to have a badge on them.
Yeah, so that's something that Chief Al's predecessor, Chief Brown, talked about. And I know I saw you shared an article in which like, he spoke at, I believe, some sort of luncheon. And like, his big point was, there's too much asked of our police. And that's perhaps some of why there's some overstepping of bounds. Like, if there's a loose dog, you call the police. If there's trouble in the schools, you call the police and ask them. Which is something interesting too with like DISD police presence. But then also, we're talking even about like, yeah, situations like Tony Timpa, where a man was having a mental health breakdown and the police came here in Dallas. And I mean, you're familiar with the Tony Timpa case, I imagine, where he was cuffed and then later he died in cop custody. And the police were mocking him in many ways. So it sounds like, if I'm hearing you right, are you proposing, yeah, a reallocation of resources for more people to be first responders when the cops are called and in areas of exercise beyond law enforcement?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We have to get, we have to get away from the model that we feel it is helpful or even rehabilitating to lock people up for things that they don't have to. You know, and I'll be honest, one of the Dallas Police Association president, actually, Mike Mata, just told me a couple of days ago, when he agreed with me about the mental health component that I'm suggesting. He said, it doesn't help the people either. We aren't trained, and so what they get from a mental health call that we don't have a mental health professional is more than likely some type of use of force is needed because of a situation being escalated. But he said, how does it help somebody that's mentally ill to slap them in handcuffs and throw them in a cage?
I mean, I think everyone can objectively agree that it doesn't help them at all.
No.
But that speaks some to DPD training, which is something that's been spoken about a lot at a lot of these demonstrations and marches. That one thing that the demonstrators keep returning to is it takes longer to get your beautician's license than it does to become a Dallas police officer. What changes can be instituted in terms of training? But also, I know one thing that we're also having issues with here in Dallas is hiring. DPD forces is nowhere, even on staffing levels that DPD itself is requiring. That, you know, they've had trouble recruiting the right officers. Is that hurting the quality of help that DPD is able to provide?
No, I think that that problem is a thing of the past at this point, to be honest.
Okay. And. Then let's talk about the training aspect then. How can that be improved?
Well, the training aspect can be improved for, to prioritize de-escalation, to prioritize the community policing mindset I don't believe that exists anymore. I think that there is, especially where high crime exists, people that live in those communities feel that law enforcement is on a different, is on a different team than they are. And I think that the best way to put that is, we should never feel like our law enforcement officers are on a different team. They're on our team, you know? They are a part of our community ecosystem.
Well, in theory, in theory anyway, right?
Exactly. That's my point.
There's a lot of people in Dallas who would argue that they don't feel they're on their team, yeah.
Well, no, and that's my point. It is not that case. And that's not just unique to Dallas. That's across the board. There is, there is a lot of reason why communities of color have a lack of trust and at a very early age have a stigma associated with law enforcement officers.
A couple of people are asking here a question that I wanted to get to myself in the comments. But is there, I think, some of that disconnect between law enforcement and the community is that the law, like, there's not a high percentage of officers in DPD. And they're not required by any stretch to live in Dallas. They're not policing their own community. Is that something that can be looked into in a way that that can be required of future hires?
You know, it's kind of a two-fold question, to be honest with you. It's. It's in theory, something that I support because I want to see more officers here. It's hard to say that we are trying to pull funding away from the police department to try to find other resources to help. Make their job more efficient. When, you know, we can barely pay them a livable wage with how high, you know, the living expenses are in the city, so. You know, sixty one thousand dollars is the starting rate for officers right now. I made that as a teacher with D I S D. I currently make sixty with as a council member, right? And if my wife was not our breadwinner, we probably wouldn't be living in the city of Dallas.
Is that tough though, then to like accept the notion of defunding the police because you want to pay them more? To get a higher quality level of officer?
Yeah, you know, I I think that there are probably better ways for us to incentivize getting. City of Dallas residents in the force such as. Tax abatement programs that could exist. You know, even like low or no interest loans.
So like if you're, if you're, if you are a first responder in Dallas proper. There are tax benefits that might come with that?
Yes, well, that's what currently exists.
That's an interesting idea. I've never, I haven't heard that, which I think is interesting. I do want to ask you, I mean, so obviously, one thing we're talking about here is is DPD use of force and, you know. It's we don't, it doesn't, you know, talk about Botham Jean. It's a main, a prominent example, obviously, Tony Timpa, who I mentioned earlier. Then obviously, this is a national issue. But I think one of the hardest things for me to reconcile as someone who's been covering. You know, we've been out at the protests like every single goddamn day. Especially early on in this, in these demonstrations. DPD ended up using the excessive force that people were protesting. How do you feel about the way DPD has responded to this moment? At large over the last two weeks?
I think that DPD failed. I mean, that's the best way that I could put it. I think that that is not a conviction or anything personal to, you know, any one entity. Or or individual of the entity. I think that it is important for us. In all fields to acknowledge when we failed and to figure out how we can do things better. And it was a, it was a failure, not only from the police department, but from the city of Dallas. I'll own, you know, some of it. We were ill prepared. There was a lack of communication. There was a lack of. Consistent knowledge, you know, across the board of what was going on, how these responses were supposed to look. And. It's, it's a sad thing. It's unfortunate for the people of Dallas. I support the protesters. And there was no reason for excessive force to be used.
It, well, my, my big issue and when I I wrote about a little bit about the bridge situation, but like. The bridge situation is getting a lot of attention. I'll be honest with you, the most like traumatic stuff that I experienced, just as a journalist covering this stuff. It it wasn't the bridge, which was quite traumatic in itself. It was the war zone like situation that we saw on Saturday, two days before the bridge. Where there was repeated use of tear gas, repeated use of rubber bullets. I myself was flash banged in the leg and tear gassed twice as a journalist with press all over myself covering this on City Hall Plaza.
I was tear gassed on Saturday.
Yeah, but DPD showed up to these protests in riot gear. And one chant that we heard earlier tonight. On some of the protests going on today was. We're not rioting, why, this isn't a riot, why are you in riot gear? Are you comfortable saying right now that DPD had the wrong approach early on and should not have shown up in riot gear?
Absolutely.
What should they have done?
You know, I'm not a law enforcement officer. So I I want to make it very clear that I. I may not be the one to tell you what de-escalation tactic should be used. I have not myself gone through de-escalation training like I hope all officers should.
Well, okay, to that end, Chief Hall said she has not gone through de-escalation training. How, what's your position on Chief Hall at the moment?
Well, I didn't get to, I didn't get to answer that other question.
Then we will get to Chief Hall.
You know, I I want to say, I I want to say something that has been kind of hard for me to. Make sense of, and that is, and I've said it a couple of times, but we had the deadliest. Night of law enforcement history, I think in our country. And from one attack, which was seven, seven here on our streets.
Yeah, I think the police were traumatized by that.
Well, I do think as well, but 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 what I'm getting at is that I don't. I was there. I didn't see anybody in riot gear.
Oh, that night? Yeah.
There were bullets flying and aimed at police officers. They were the the targets of this attack. And we were able to de-escalate that situation and even. Finished the job Chief Brown did with that with the the robot that you know the story of.
Many issues with the robot, just that's another conversation for another time.
But the point is. Not one rubber bullet was fired, not one can of tear gas was used. No use of excessive force happened and there were people with assault rifles on their backs walking through. A crowded protest just as we saw last week happen.
Okay, so then, yeah, de-escalation training is 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 something we need to see and that's something that. Chief Hall acknowledged, I believe in the Friday marathon session. That she herself has not gone through. Is that in and of itself a problem?
I do believe that that is a problem, yes.
Uh, how do you feel about the way Chief Hall has responded to all this?
You know, just as I've I've said publicly and just as I've told her, I think that. That we failed as a city and. As a police department. To. To take an opportunity that we had to be, in my opinion, a pioneer of large cities across this country on how. We should handle protesters, on how we should react to large crowd. Large crowd control from law enforcement, but unfortunately, like you said, there's the irony in that. People are out here on the streets angry and hurt and sad and frustrated because of excessive force that exists. And, you know, and on one breath. You have our police department, which this is a statement that I agree with. But that wants to really push the message that there are bad apples out of there, you know, and. It's hard to convince them they're just bad apples when we're out here. Protesting police brutality and you're shooting me with non-lethal rounds.
Well, non-lethal rounds is even kind of like a funny term, right? Because it closes up range. Kind of anything. Are you aware, there's, there's actually, we we reported this about an hour beforehand and I might have to. Move the camera for a second as my dog gets a little anxious and have to let her out the door.
Okay, no worries.
But the. There was a lawsuit filed this evening. Hoping to put a temporary restraining order on the use of. Rubber bullets and and tear gas against DPD. However, like it's still in the process, I believe, of being filed. You're talking about DPD has an opportunity to be a thought leader here. If DPD were to take that measure on their own accord. They would be the first department in the country to do so.
They would.
Is that something you would encourage them to do?
Oh, I mean, that's something that I want to do and, you know, here's, here's another aspect to it. Why, why do, does any municipality need that readily available? We have a unique circumstance on this council where in our first year of being in office. As a council, we have now experienced three emergency declarations. That's, it's, that's pretty unheard of, but one of the responses.
Super fucked, just in general.
Basically, yes. But once that has been filed, resources that are afforded to us include other. Law enforcement agencies. And so. I'm curious to to know why it makes sense when that structure exists and we know that these. Agencies are equipped with these more military grade weaponry. Why it's even necessary for them to be readily available, because if there's a big enough emergency. We have the other agencies deployed who will have those things in hand, so I I I'm, I'm kind of. You know, I wanted to stop completely.
What, the use of of tear gas and rubber bullets and things like that, or what are you talking about?
Yeah. Excessive, those excessive measures and and what I would call military grade weapons as. As de-escalation or crowd control measures. I just, I I don't think that they belong anywhere around civil people.
We just got a comment that is exactly the next question I was going to ask myself, which is that. Taxes that are being paid through things like, you know, restaurants and whatnot. The city budget is going to shrink because of coronavirus. How does that affect a notion like defunding the police?
So that's a good question. And I hope that I can articulate it to make sense. It's important for us to not focus on a dollar amount. Because of there being a sales tax shortfall. I believe that we're going to probably see a budget that has a smaller dollar amount in just about every department.
Sure. So you focus more on percentages then?
Yes, so the whole point is that it's about the percent of the pie. It's about right now sixty percent of the overall operating budget is to public. And it's about how can we, how can we use those funds in other, in other ways? So it it will, I would like to see that pie chart, if you will. Somewhat even more out and just to give a perspective for some of you who are watching. Sixty percent of the budget to public safety, meanwhile, less than one percent has been given to homelessness. And that is something that just came up two years ago.
Yeah. We. You know, these are things that get discussed in City Hall. A number of. Your fellow council members ran on the notion of civility, including the mayor, who even himself ran on the notion of being able to. Put together a quorum and put together, you know, make, put together majorities in order to make bills pass. I'm sure you've seen viral footage of last Friday's council meeting. Which was an A. It was an eight hour long session and at the end of the session tensions were high. I think it's safe to say though that what we've seen in Dallas of late hasn't necessarily been the civility. On City Hall that some campaigned for. What is your current estimation of how? City council is able to work together? And how, obviously, these are high, high stress times, but. Are you confident that the city can? Can push forward and come to a consensus? I mean, we had, we saw the ten council members releasing that. Releasing that letter kind of in tandem. But what does that mean as far as the ability of the council to work together? Because we've seen examples in the last week that. Maybe would would go to show that the council is not working well together.
Well, I think that there's, there's been a lot of. A lot of light shed on a dynamic that exists with our mayor and I don't. Expect that to need to change for us to be effective. There's definitely a common denominator where there has been, you know, drama that exists. And, you know, that common denominator is just one of fifteen votes. So the reality of it is, as unfortunate as it is. It, we can get things done without the mayor. And in a perfect world, that wouldn't be the case. But if you acknowledge where that common denominator lies, you will see that. There's not really near as much disarray amongst the body as you would, as you would think. It it's just highlighted because it, there has been a lot of nonsense surrounding members and the mayor. But as far as the dynamic that exists around the council, it's, it's actually a very. Civil, I guess is a good word, environment, you know, where there's, there's respect across the board. There have been extremely fruitful conversations. I've had great conversations. Especially even during this time with white colleagues who I feel. You know, has a lot to learn and seeing them willing to be. Willing to learn and listen is 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 a very big thing.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it was to many, the surprise of many. That one of the more conservative members of the council, Lee Kleiman, was out there painting Black Lives Matter. So hopefully that is a sign of some change. Let's get into a little wonky discussion, just only briefly. There was an agenda on the item yesterday to actually increase some of DPD budget, like six point something million dollars. Walk us through that real quick.
Yeah, so that vote. When we did budget season, we allocated or we we budgeted for X amount of police officers that could be done through the. The line item that was for personnel. You budget about a hundred thousand dollars for each officer to hire. And that. There was concern from some council members during budget season that if, if you're saying we have. Six hundred officers short and we are only budgeting to make up for that by X. How are we gonna get there? Well, they said, well, you know, I mean, depending on the class size and the frequency of the classes offered with the academy and etcetera. There's a lot of variables that. There is this reserve pot of money that we can use to hire more officers. So, long story short, what happened was, and that's why I was telling you, it's actually, since the pay had been in attrition and. Pension have all been addressed over the past two years. Every class size is maxed out. I mean, there, there, there are more in the queue.
Then what was, what was the six point, was it six point seven or six point five?
Point five.
What was that, was that going, what was that going to go for specifically and then?
Seven officers.
So, okay, so then.
That are already hired.
What does that mean?
Well, that, so that's what, so that's what I was trying to say is that it's, it's actually kind of, it's kind of hard to really explain. The, so what this was, what that that voting agenda item was, was an.
Are those officers not paid?
No, 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 they are. This was, this was, it's called an equity adjustment. And and so it's at mid-year to to see where we are. And basically, I guess, a change order, if you will, that's essentially what it would have been approving because it would have. It would have made us end the year at a different level.
Okay.
So, and so, like I said, that those officers are hired, they're getting paid. So by this delay, it was more of like, I think that the, the challenging piece for TC is going to be. You already know cuts are coming, right? We already know these officers are hired and and will continue to be paid. Essentially, figure it out.
So it seems like you're saying, yeah. By saying cuts are coming, you're, you're, you're talking about the notion of defunding. To some degree, DPD to reallocate its resources. Just seems to me, and 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 maybe this is just a misunderstanding of the way that things work, but. Delaying as opposed to voting and voting no. A no, a no vote would have been a statement, I think, in the midst of everything we're seeing right now. Why delay that as opposed to voting no?
So, well, I think it's because of where that that confusion lies. I think that the ultimate goal would be for us to not. Vote for this. But that's what I mean by, it's kind of like charging TC to figure out where this money can be found. There's going to be cuts coming from other places that could be cuts coming now and figure this out so that we. Bless you, so that we can make do with what we have. You know, honor our obligations now, but. You know, still be able to. Still be able to not have to vote for an actual increase to accomplish that.
We've got about ten minutes left, so I'm going to put the pace a little bit on some of these questions. I appreciate the time you've provided us so far, so thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
The, you know, the protesters are very adamant that they're going to keep keep marching and keep taking to the streets until they see change. Budget session doesn't happen until September. You guys set out this letter to TC Brownax earlier in the week. Is there change that can happen between now and September without waiting for that? Like, is there a resolution that can be passed before the actual budget session?
I don't think one that would that would suffice. And quite frankly, I don't think that it's something we should be doing knee-jerk.
In that case, is the council prepared? I mean, one thing that I've been really inspired by is is the wherewithal and stick-to-it-ness of the protesters. We're in day fourteen. In in a GD pandemic. Are y'all prepared to have protesters taken to the streets until September?
I mean, I support them if that's what happens.
Surely, they'd like to see action before then.
Of course. But again, I don't believe that it's action that should be done knee-jerk. I mean, let's, you know.
Right now, September is three months away. Three months isn't a knee-jerk. There's there's plenty of time.
No, that isn't a knee-jerk, but you're saying to do it prior to that.
Well, I'm saying you have three months to before three months are up to make some changes.
It it's a little hard to make changes when it comes specifically to funding when you're at the eleventh hour of a fiscal year budget, because a lot of a lot of things are to adjust for what's already been paid for. I think that the most substantial changes are going to be well thought out with a lot of community input, just like every other budget season, so that once we implement that that with a new fiscal year budget, it's not trying to just piecemeal something for some political gain.
So, okay, it it sounds like maybe you're bound a little bit by the process, but
Of course.
We're not going to see any substantial legislation change until September.
No, no, that's not true. Now, legislation is different than than budget. I was saying specific to budget. But now that's the the most substantial changes that we can make with funding should wait till October, until we pass the new one. Now, with legislation, I would love to see things before that. In fact, I will have a resolution coming in probably our first agenda meeting in August. And that will be it's a decriminalization of marijuana.
That's a question on my thing right now. The city council approved site and release not too long ago. What what further steps can we take against low-level drug offenses in the city?
Well, I'm I'm trying to capitalize on the hemp law that was passed, the hemp bill, last legislative session in Texas, and that requires a THC testing to be done for their for any charges to be substantiated. So
Possession?
What's that?
You said THC testing, it would have to be done even on possession charges?
No, yeah, in order to even convict on a possession charge now because because of CBD legalization and there being a small threshold of THC legally allowed in CBD products. That's why this this hemp law requires you to decipher what marijuana is from.
A decriminalization of of possession?
Yes, personally used.
Okay. That's interesting. Under an ounce, you said? Let's let's kind of do some quick hit almost lightning lightning round questions in the last six minutes here. We already discussed at the top of this discussion that you are representing a kind of minority-majority district. What contact have you had with black leaders in your district of late? And what are you hearing from them? And how is that informing your policy? And I know that's a loaded question late into this when I'm asked for lightning round, but please do the best you can.
I have I I speak to black leaders in the community almost daily. And they absolutely provide a lot of insight and feedback even with how I'm responding or how they wish people would be responding.
Predict who you are in contact with, you can name.
I mean, well, it depends on who you're talking about. There's different.
Talking to who you're talking to.
Well, it depends. That's that's my point. It depends. There there are different leaders for different things. There are there are different faith leaders. There are different community leaders. There's neighborhood association leaders. You know what I'm saying? So really, it just depends. But like Eva Jones in South Dallas. Ms. Anna Hill is someone that I highly respect, and and she is who keeps me up to date with anything around Dolphin Heights. You know, Ms. Willie Mae Coleman down at the Bertrand neighborhood is somebody that I try to keep in normal communication with to just kind of get her pulse for what's feeling down there. Ms. Sherry Nixon down in the off of Bear Street. She runs the Hoover Center. You know, Ken Smith is somebody in South Dallas that is extremely knowledgeable. Pastor Simmons and Dr. Terry Flowers at.
What are these people telling you?
St. Philip's. Well, again, the subject matters that I talked to each of them are.
Like during with the Black Lives Matter protests and police brutality protests, what are they telling you now?
Well, so I will talk about the last conversation that I had was with the president or with like with a community leader was a couple of days ago, president of Phyllis Wheatley Neighborhood Association. And her name is Destiny, and she was just trying to find out how the community can help. How, who who they need to be reaching out to to give feedback. They want to promote community policing. They want to promote safer streets. They also are supportive of the notion that equity has to be addressed in order for us to to get there.
Let's keep going on the kind of the lightning round aspect. Donald Trump was in town today. He did not invite any local law enforcement officials to his roundtable. Apparently, he did invite Mary Johnson, who had an obligation, so he could not attend. What are your thoughts on that real quickly?
I I mean, I have no respect for that man.
Okay, you told me on City Hall Plaza the other night that there is talks for a pride flag to fly on one of the three poles outside of City Hall. When can we expect that?
I did say that, and I told you.
Talked up, but now I know. When can that happen? When can we expect them?
I will say that that I saw it in person for the first time, and that's as much as I'm going to tell you about what the vlog is. But so we just saw it today, and we do not have a firm date of when it will be unveiled.
Can we say about the end of 2020?
Oh, no, it'll be this Pride Month.
During Pride Month?
Yeah.
Amazing. Last question, we have two minutes left, so I'm going to give you like sixty seconds. Dallas has a very long and tiresome history of gross racism. We wrote an article about it that said you cannot recognize the future, like we cannot reconcile the future of Dallas's of Dallas without recognizing its racist past. In what ways, especially as someone who represents the area surrounding Fair Park, in which many things have been done that are emblematic, I think, of systemic racism? How has Dallas's history of racism informed your political positions?
I mean, it's you hit the nail on the head. I don't believe that there's anything that I can do effective to try and incite change for the future if I'm not doing it with cognizance of the history of of what exists here.
All right, we've got we've got a minute left, so I'm sorry. I'm going to cut you off. I'm going to give you one last yes or no question. Not quite yes or no question. How can we get the words Black Lives Matter on the Omni?
I'm working on it.
Are you working on it? And in what way?
I actually have been before there was that big ass petition. And I actually I called the city manager, and I was like, you're going to see a petition come up, and I promise I had nothing to do with it. Because I was already on it.
All right, well, hopefully that happens. We have thirty seconds left, so unfortunately, I have to kind of cut this short. I appreciate you being game, Councilman Adam Bazaldo, District Seven, for taking the time. I think this has been lively and 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 interesting and insightful discussion. So thank you so much for taking the time. Thank you. You know, we haven't seen every council member out there, so thank you for being out there. You have ten seconds left, so I'm going to say good night. Thank you for tuning in, guys, and we will have this up in the coming days. Thank you for watching.